It being seven o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting of the Arundel Planning Board to order. Today is October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is seven P M. We are in the municipal meeting room. And we have approval of the agenda. Approval of minutes of October first, two thousand twenty-four, and for the sidewalk of the same date. We have a space for public comment. And then we have one item of business that is the Fitzpatrick developments. And I will start with a roll call from the far end.
Jamel Torres, contract planner.
Marty Kane.
Zachary Shapiro.
James Lowery.
Paul Green.
Susan Roth.
Rich Genong, I am the chairman. So our need a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion, we approve the agenda adding the site walk minutes of October first.
Yeah. Okay, motion by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane. To approve the agenda with the addition of the October first sidewalk. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We were all here that day.
One abstention.
Nope. Okay, so there is one, two, three.
Five. One's in here.
I thought we were approving the agenda.
We're just approving the agenda, so.
Our current agenda.
Okay.
Sorry. Yep. No, you're right. Sorry, I did myself.
So all those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, on to the minute, the approval of the minutes for the sidewalk. On October first. There's only two of you that were here, so you can.
Make a motion to approve the sidewalk.
Yeah. Okay, Paul, motion by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane to approve this, the minutes of the sidewalk on October first. Any discussion? Hearing none. There are three of us in favor and three abstentions. Onto the minutes of the October first meeting.
Make a move minutes?
Yeah.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Marty Kane to approve the minutes of the October first Planning Board meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I abstain.
And it's the same as before. Three in favor and three abstentions. Thank you very much. Motion passes. And the next item is public comment. Public comment is only open to people who are members of, of the public and have no business in front of the, the Planning Board at this point. And since I don't see anybody that fits into that category, we will move right on by. Old business, Fitzpatrick Development. Site plan amendment and conditional use application. The applicant is proposing an amendment to his previously approved site plan, eliminating the seven campsites. The conditional use application is for a ten thousand square foot commercial indoor recreation facility and associated parking. The parcel is located in the A R D zone on tax map four lot twenty-three. Ben Fitzpatrick is the applicant and Christopher Taylor P E is the applicant's engineer. And I'm, I'm assuming that that is.
Yes, this is Ben Fitzpatrick and Chris Taylor, he had another meeting a bit for tonight. I was watching my children and we all just made it right in time. So we're very excited to be here tonight. Uh, I think we've made some good amendments and I feel like our site is ready for our new business and I'd love to hear y'alls. Um, thoughts and, and see what we, questions for us?
Yeah, and um, just a quick update on the plans, um, since we were last here. We have added, uh, the additional, uh, parking spaces to, um, which is shown down here. Um, uh, that brings the site kind of up to the required number of parking spaces. Uh, so we're no longer requesting the waiver for reduction. Um, and then we've also added a fifteen thousand gallon Cistern, which is located, um, kind of right at the bend of Heavy Hammer Road where it takes that ninety degree turn to the left. Um, has that was requested by the fire chief. Uh, so those are really the two, uh, changes to the plans, um, and we're here to answer any questions you have.
Well, my question is for the chief. Are you happy with it?
Yeah.
Works for me. I'm really easy to please. If the chief says it's good, I'm fine with it.
That's right. That was our goal. Absolutely. Keep the chief happy. And, uh, yeah, it came out great and I'm excited. I think the Cistern is a, is a beautiful solution.
Okay, I, I, I must admit, I found it very confusing to try to find where the Cistern was on the plans. You found the busiest plan possible and indicated where it was.
Certainly when it came up, uh, my, uh, Sean Lavi and I were scratching our heads going, oh my goodness, this is a big dig, but we, we did it and actually it was, uh, Chief Stevens' recommendation on where to put it and, and that's where we're going. The glaciers are coming out tomorrow to, to put the hole in the ground.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Does, does the board have any questions?
Yeah, just, uh, real quick with, uh, to Chris, um, if I remember correctly, the additional parking spaces and gravel surface all fell under your origin, what you just added in fell under your originally approved
Yes.
impervious for the site, so shouldn't have any complications with things through the D E P.
That's correct. Yeah, it's, it's basically identical as the, the old approval, um, just under just slightly reduced amount of impervious area, so no changes to the, the stormwater, all drains down to the, uh, the wet pond at the bottom of the plan there.
I'm good. I don't have any questions.
Okay. Jamel?
Uh, there were two uh, items that the board should act on, and one was the waiver request. Um, for schematic design of proposed signs, which the board uh, communicated you're comfortable with last time. And then just the gravel parking, um, the ordinance allows for it, um, as designed, but the planning board should just, you know, determine that you're okay with that, um, since it is a different than the pavement requirement, but the ordinance allows for gravel if the board so wishes.
Okay.
That's it.
Do we need a motion for that if we've, if we've discussed it and it's gonna be on the plans?
Um, I don't think you need a motion for the gravel, just, uh, discussion.
Okay.
Um, but for the waiver, yes, you do.
Right.
So I move that we approve the waiver request for the signage to be reviewed and finalized. I presume by the code enforcement officer?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion by James Lowery, seconded by Susan Roth to waive the sign requirements, uh, contingent upon the codes enforcement officer, because he will make the, he'll look at it and say, yeah. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. And then we, you guys are aware of the fact that the gra, the additional parking is all going to be gravel, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. And that, that is allowed, so that works for me. And then I.
The main D E P permit. We gotta get that taken down.
Uh, it's in with them, uh, getting sign off from them is, is been slow, but yeah, they've, they've, they've seen it and so we're, yeah.
What do you need from us, Rich? An application for, I mean, a a vote on completions or?
No, we've already deemed it complete.
Right, so.
Jamel?
Uh, if the board so wishes, we did provide a findings of fact, conclusions of law in your packets.
Yeah.
If you get to that point, um, so maybe we're there.
So we need, we need to vote to approve the project and then go through the findings of fact.
I vote that we approve the project as presented this evening.
Any other question? Any seconds of that great motion?
I couldn't hear it.
He moved it to the second.
Yeah, I'm looking for a second.
Yeah, second.
Okay. Motion by Susan Roth, seconded by Zachary to determine the, uh, to approve the application as presented this date. And given that information, uh, Arundel Planning Board findings of fact and conclusions of law for the Fitzpatrick Development Heavy Hammer Lane. The applicant submitted a site plan amendment conditional use review application to the Planning Board on June eighteenth, two thousand twenty-four. The proposal includes a change of use of the previously approved ten thousand square foot commercial building to an indoor commercial recreational facility. Additionally, the in additionally, the previously approved seven independent camping sites with electrical hookups have been removed entirely from the scope of this application. The proposal is located on Heavy Hammer Lane Assessor's Tax Map for Lot Twenty-three. The proposal is located within the Alfred Road Business A R zoning district. The Planning Board reviewed the project on July second, two thousand twenty-four and held a public hearing on September tenth, two thousand twenty-four. The Planning Board determined that a sidewalk was not necessary for the proposal. Findings of fact, number one, applicant B D F Holdings LLC. Number two, owner, same as applicant. Number three, location, Heavy Hammer Lane Assessor's Tax Map for Lot Twenty-three. Number four, zoning, Alfred Road Business District A R. Number five, existing land use, mixed use, commercial warehouse and residential. Number six, proposed land use, mixed use, indoor commercial recreational facility, warehouse and residential. Number seven, acreage of twenty-five point eight acres. Number eight, other, associated off-street parking spaces, utilities, site grading, stormwater, infrastructure, landscaping and a fifteen thousand gallon Cistern for safety purposes. Conclusions of law, the Planning Board has determined that the application to be in conformance with the criteria set forth in section ten point six point four in the land use ordinance. Please remember, all of these need a vote. Number one, the proposed project conforms to all standards of the zoning district and meets or exceeds performance standards specified in sections five, nine, and ten of this ordinance. The proposed project does conform to all applicable zoning and performance standards.
Move to accept. Do you, do you do motion for it or?
Yes, we need a motion for the next ten items.
So motion to accept is written conclusion of law number one.
Okay. Motion by Zachary, seconded by Marty to approve uh, number one. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Number two, the proposed project has received all applicable federal and state permits. The proposed project requires a revised main D E P site location of development act permit approval. This required permit approval has been added to the conditions of approval below. No other federal or state permits are required for the project.
Move to accept number two as written.
Second.
Motion by Zachary, seconded by Susan to accept number two as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Sorry about that, I forgot to ask for discussion. Number three, the proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety and fire protection and will not create a financial burden for the town of Arundel in the provision of emergency services and law enforcement to the project site and the neighborhood. The proposed project does not unreasonably impact public safety, fire protection, and emergency services.
Move to accept.
Second.
Motion by Marty, seconded by Zachary to, uh, accept number three. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. Number four, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact upon the quality of surface or groundwater resources. The proposed project does not impact the quality of surface or groundwater resources.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Susan, seconded by Zachary. The number four, any discussion? Hearing those, all those in favor?
Aye.
It is unanimous. Number five, the project provides adequate stormwater management facilities to produce no additional peak runoff from the site during a twenty-five year storm event and will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties. The project provides adequate stormwater management facilities and will not produce additional peak runoff from this site during a twenty-five year storm event. Excuse me. And will not have an undue impact on municipal stormwater facilities or downstream properties.
Motion to accept number five as written.
Second.
Motion by Zachary, seconded by Jamie Lowery to accept number five. Any discussion? Hearing those, hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number six, the proposed project will not have an adverse onsite impact upon existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems within the community or neighborhood. No impacts to existing vehicular and pedestrian circulation systems are anticipated.
So moved?
Right.
Motion by Susan, seconded by Marty to approve number six. Any discussion? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number seven, the proposed project will not have an adverse impact on environmental quality, critical wildlife habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhood, surrounding environments, or the community. No impacts to environmental quality, critical wildlife habitat, habitats, marine resources, important cultural resources, or visual quality of the neighborhoods, surrounding environments, or, or the community are anticipated.
Motion.
Motion by Jamie, seconded by
Susan.
Susan, okay, seconded by Susan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Number eight, the proposed project will not produce noise, odors, dust, debris, glare, solar obstruction, or other nuisances that will adversely impact the quality of life of surrounding parcels. None of the above nuisances are anticipated.
So moved?
Second.
Motion by Susan, seconded by Zachary. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Number nine, the, the proposed project will not have a negative fiscal impact on municipal government. No negative fiscal impact on the municipal government is anticipated.
Don't move.
Second.
Motion by Marty, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous. Number ten, that the use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and the anticipated future development of the neighborhood. The proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Move to accept.
Motion by Zachary, seconded by Jamie. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion is approved, unanimous. The Planning Board granted the following waivers, land use ordinance section ten point five point two point six, schematic design of proposed signs. The Planning Board determined that a schematic design of the proposed, uh, schematic design of the proposed signs is not required because the design of the anticipated signage for the site has not been finalized at this time. Any proposed signage will require an approved sign permit from the codes enforcement officer. Conditions of approval, based on the above findings of fact and conclusions of law, the Arundel Planning Board approves the site plan amendment conditional use review of B D F Holdings LLC to operate a mixed use development consisting of indoor commercial recreation faci, facility, warehouse, and residential uses as herein presented can contingent upon the following conditions. The Planning Board has determined that a proposed six inches of vehicular gravel as proposed by the applicant for the majority of the off-street parking spaces on the site may be substituted for the required two inches of bituminous concrete in accordance with section five point twelve point two point two, parking lot driveway surface in the land use ordinance. Number two, any modification from the approved plan shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Board. Number three, in accordance with section ten point seven of the land use ordinance, the applicant shall submit a performance guarantee acceptable to the Planning Department prior to the commencement of any site activity associated with this project. The performance guarantee shall be reviewed and approved by the Planning Department prior to the issuance of a building permit. In accordance with section ten point nine of the land use ordinance, all legal rights, privileges, and duties thereof shall expire if the project construction has not commenced within one year of the approval date and if the project is not substantially completed within two years of the approval date. The Planning Board may grant a one-year extension on the conditional use review approvals if compelling evidence is presented that additional time is required to meet federal, state, or local permit requirements or in reaction to market changes. Number six, complete the requirements that set forth by the fire department prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. Number six, modify the height of the light fixtures on the site so that they meet the applicable requirements set forth in the land use ordinance. Number seven, label all areas on the plans with loam and seed mix to ensure that these areas will remain vegetated on the site. Number eight, provide the required main D E P site location of development act permit approval. Number nine, no further development shall be permitted on the subject property until the property owner receives a main D O T traffic movement permit unless otherwise approved by main D O T. So approved by the Planning Board this, this date, October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Everybody happy? Any discussion, any comments? All those in favor of the motion to?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. Congratulations.
Yay.
Thank you guys. Thank you very much, everybody.
You guys should sign this, uh, before you leave.
Yes, we will, we will get the in fact.
And, um,
and they signed it up to the plan.
We'll hold off on signing the plans because there are a few plan edits in the conditions, so we'll do that a future day.
Okay.
Good night, guys.
You too.
Bye.
Okay, the next item that we have on the agenda is a discussion with the fire chief to have a workshop on, it's not on the agenda. It's not, but, uh, we've been trying to get something worked out. It looks like in two weeks on the twenty-ninth, because we do not have a meeting on that, that night. And the chief is available, so we're gonna, we're gonna have a workshop at seven P M. Here in this room. And we'll discuss, there, there's a number of different things from the fire ordinance point of view that we want to be able to review and look at and possible suggestions on a couple of other changes on that we might want to make. But not, not the least of we, with the, uh, the twenty-ninth, two weeks from tonight. We don't, we don't have a meeting. We should, we should have a meeting. One more? Oh, wait.
So Rich, what was the, what is the purpose of that?
Uh, the chief is, has, has asked to get together with us and, and we're going to look at some of the changes to the, to the ordinance, things that he might want to see so that we can, uh, get it better worked out with him. And I think we also want to take a look at the idea of ha, of, of doing an industrial park section of an ordinance. Because we don't have anything that defines one, but Heavy Hammer Lane is about as close as we get. So we should, we can't, we're not gonna impact anything they do, but if, if another project like that comes along, we can have something set up so that we don't run around making adjustments.
Sound good? Kind of, you believe keep on doors, right? And with move on door, we have, we have, whereas we don't have uh, where, that's one. So, sorry, that's too long. You didn't curve. That's on top.
Yeah. So I'm, I'm prepared with ideas about fire protection and ordinance and all that good stuff. So that we can, we can draft something up. You, you may have noticed I'm slightly biased towards the fire department.
Uh, we do we need to vote on that to set it, or is it set? I mean, it's in my calendar. I'm glad of it. Let's just make sure. The reason I asked, thinking, I know public meetings, previous meetings, maybe you guys discussed it, we were gonna talk about what we needed to do in November with regard to the, the election day, you know, disturbance of this room or use of this room. And if, did we decide to meet on the twelfth?
Yes, I thought we had decided the twelfth and the nineteenth.
Okay.
Thank you for, but yeah, you know, it's a good idea. Let's, let's take a vote on the, because it's just a workshop.
I'll make a motion, we hold a workshop on October twenty-ninth at
seven P M.
Seven P M here.
Second.
Motion by Paul Green, seconded by Jamie Lowery to hold a workshop with the fire chief here on October twenty-ninth. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? It is unanimous.
To the chair.
Yeah, Marty.
Question, how many uh, approvals have we had out which have not been started or in the process of? I think we should find that out for future references so that the chief or anybody else uh, knows what's going on.
I don't know.
I mean, it's because we were talking about extensions and everything else as we were coming in. All right, they may have been approved, but there's a time element which is allowed for start or continuations or anything else.
The only, the only ones that, that I was aware of are like Brayley. Uh, which is we have them set for public hearing. Uh,
Which one?
Birch Park, I'm sorry. Brayley is this, is the subdivision on, off old poster that we've already talked about. We're doing a public hearing on them next week and in two weeks and finishing them off. And we've got the same, same situation with with another, because we have two public hearings and I don't remember who they are right off the top.
Marty, are you talking about that? Are you talking about stuff that's been approved and hasn't started within the year?
That's what I'm saying.
That I, that we don't know, because one, once it clears our, our, our offices that in here, once we voted on it and said, okay, they can, they can do it. I don't know who mon, I don't know who monitors whether or not that gets done.
And check what we approved versus what Jim issued permit. That's the only way you're gonna know.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, the, it, it's, it's not even a question of Jim issuing a permit, because he's got two years in which to issue the permit. They've got one year to start the work.
Yeah, but if they haven't pulled a permit, they probably haven't started, or if they have, it's not leaving.
Well, they could start the site work.
That wouldn't be the first time that that's happened.
Well, I'm, I'm referring to one that's like where that building was supposed to be built on Route One.
Yeah.
And nothing has been done and it's been more than a year.
Was it the South Door?
No, it was, uh, uh,
Which one, Marty?
Uh, where the Thomas and the builder, where they have the, all the granite and everything else.
Lord?
Yeah.
Oh, that project.
It hasn't even been
Yeah, they never came back.
Yeah, they don't, they don't have a permit.
Well, after a period of time, they can't start anything.
No, they have to resubmit if they want to do anything. They would have to resubmit to the Planning Board because they have no per, permit from us.
Yeah, but that's what I'm just saying is, how many are, are there out there that we've approved already and?
If, if we've approved them, then it goes over, I would imagine it goes to the codes enforcement officer to check and make sure that they've actually started work. And if they have not started work, then he has to, he has to tell them they have to come back and do it all over again. Because if they don't do, you know, if if they do some site work and they plant some, some stuff around, you know, they've gotten it started. They have two years to get it significantly finished.
Well, I'm just using that as an example, this is like, uh, Jay Brothers is putting the, the new filling station in up on
Yep.
one eleven. We have no knowledge of it. We have 111. We have no knowledge of it. We haven't had, nothing's come to us and.
According, according to the codes enforcement officer, they don't need to come to us because it's, it's been less than two years since the filling station disappeared from that property.
Um, who's counting, whose calendar?
His calendar. I don't know what to tell you, Marty. I had the discussion with the.
Thinking, I mean, uh, overall of different questions.
If, there, there might be, but again, once, once we get done with them and we grant, grant them like we did tonight, these guys have got 12 months from today to start the work and they've got two years from today to complete the work. And if they don't, then they're going to have to come back and start this whole process over again, so let's pray they get it all done.
Yeah, but the building's already up.
Yes, because it went up under, under, uh, a conditional use for a different purpose and they just changed the purpose of it. So we're in good shape from there.
Move to adjourn. Move to adjourn.
We're done.